So, should we start? Let's start. It's close enough. Now that everyone's here, so we'll call it the order. We have roll call. I'm here and Deb's here.
President.
So, let me do the pledge. We have to do a pledge of allegiance. We've got a moment of silence. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, yeah, a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Uh, almost in favor.
Aye.
So, we now have an agenda. Is there any public comment?
No.
No. So then we'll move on to our action items. So, we, um, we just have to review the request procedure and basically, it's on the back of this memo. Right, yeah. You have, this one right here, on the back of that.
Thank you very much.
So, that, this is, it goes through, it says, "All requests by those who want to place non-government items on the county property, including the parks, must submit a written proposal to the county administrator that outlines the following: the type of item, proposed location, length of placement, and potential cost." So, what I was thinking on him, on this then, is that we could have a form. I was talking with Laurel. Maybe we get a form made up that has these things on them that, um, if someone, we say you have to fill out this form.
If somebody has a request.
Yeah.
They get a form so that they can provide all the pertinent information.
Does that, do you think that gives you enough information to make one up?
I think so. And I'd probably elaborate a little bit more on it, get their contact information.
Right.
And use some sort of...
Any other pertinent information that would be required?
And we can always add or delete from it, you know, as we, we see, you know, as they come through. So, and then this, it goes on that, but all, all requests would be, um, would be brought through the Board of Commissioners after that this committee makes a recommendation.
Do we want to touch on, uh, any type of maintenance that may be required for the item that's being?
Well, that would be the potential cost.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be, address that. I think you're right, Bill. So, and then we're, and it goes down, so we're gonna look at the, the, is this, is this MSU's landscaping plan? Or do you have a different one?
We have a diagram of this, this all just made up when they planned the garden. Yes.
So it has more detail in this one?
Um, well, it's just, it's just for this area, this, kind of this area here.
Okay.
So it doesn't...
Could we get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Because...
I have the one copy I have of it. I can bring it if you guys want.
Right, because I think, you know, they may have the idea that they want that tree up in that area. We have no idea what's up there without going out there and looking at it. Do you have the items identified that are planted? Yeah, I think that would be helpful for us to have that, don't you think?
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if that's what you're thinking, it would go, but I, I...
No, I'm, I'm saying that they might think it would be going in this area. So I think we should take a look and, um, see if we recommend that area or we don't recommend that area for whatever reason.
Yeah.
Because when this...
Well, I thought we'd go through the whole thing and then we'll make a recommendation where we'd want to put it.
Okay.
And then if it's, you know, I, I do think it'd be good to look at that, but I don't think that we're gonna go by what they want. It's what...
I understand that, but the point that I'm making is if we get the question, "Why can't we put it in this area?" What are we gonna say?
Yeah.
Because we haven't reviewed the information. That's all I'm saying, so...
Yeah, that's really good. But I guess I was, do you, they're, they want to plant a tree here on the campus and put a plaque by it. Do you, would you have any idea what would, I mean, I know you've kind of worked on this and this whole garden area.
Yeah.
So I was wondering, do you have any ideas about where that, that would be? Where that might be, where would be a good location or...
Do we know what kind of tree?
Well, we get to tell.
Oh, you tell them.
Yeah. And we want it to be a native, I think.
Yeah.
Um, something I thought about as well, and, uh, a Japanese maple. I don't know that much about them. All, I do know that they're very slow growing and I don't think they get very tall, but I could be wrong about that.
I don't think that's native.
Oh. It's gotta be a native tree.
Well, I think that's what they're trying to, I think that's, the campus is trying to go that way.
Okay.
I know, isn't that what you're trying to do here with all native plants?
Yeah, I mean, I would certainly prefer that they were native. I mean, ultimately, all I can do is make suggestions.
Well, I just happened to think about it this morning, you know, because I thought, you know, maybe a small tree somewhere instead of a 60 footer or an 80 footer or, you know...
I mean, the only concern I, that I think we would have regarding our, you know, landscaping that the master gardeners take care of is, is shading. If it was something that would do a lot of shading of, say, the rain garden, which is right here. Is that where the rain garden is? This is the entrance? Oh, are these trees?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, no, the rain garden's right here. So this little patch right here is the rain garden with a lot of flowers and...
Right, and we don't want to put that in shade.
Right.
Okay. I, I didn't think about that.
Um, but, you know, that's really would be my only concern I can think of right now and...
Roots being so close to the building?
That's, I mean, that's, I don't know. It's not really...
Not a concern.
Yeah, I mean, certainly that is something you should think about, um...
Well, I guess, is there a, a type of tree that would be not grow very big but isn't a native? Like, I, I thought of a yew, but I don't even know if that's a native here.
Is it?
Okay.
Um, I don't know. Lots of good trees in that, but it would be on their own purpose or pretty, definitely be nice and, um, it's not gonna get super big, but they can get 30 feet tall.
Yes, I hope so. We planted ourselves.
There's one of the maple vineberry grounds. They have that beautiful, one of them was standing in the park shape there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they're, they're messy. And when it comes to maintenance, you know, those trees, you know, drop their flowers, drop whatever it is, their pods or... How messy is that gonna be?
I don't think they're that messy. Their flowers are pretty small. It's not like a...
Lots of hints to think about.
Right.
And I could give you a list, um, you know, a few different varieties that would be native and have different characteristics. Are you, are you thinking you don't want it to go real tall?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess we, we need to look at where would be a good location.
Right.
You know, and I, you know, this, this, I think, is pretty steep, but I was thinking along here somewhere if we were gonna do it. I don't really, I don't know that we want to add any more trees in here or anything.
There already are.
Quite a few in here. You know, and I, you know, I, I think she's right, but, you know, I think they want it somewhere around the building, but, I mean, it could, could even be over here so it doesn't affect the, the building at all.
Uh, what's there right now? I can't see it.
It says Catalpa.
That's the hill. That, that entire hill's got native plants from soil conservation.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, yeah. So that's their garden with, that's where they put the tarps and things.
And that's what I was gonna say. I thought that there was activity over here. And the other thing too is, you know, expansion down the road. I, I don't know. But if we start loading up, let's say they wanted to expand that parking area, that would be the most convenient place to expand parking if it were needed. I mean, I don't know, but I'm just saying down the road.
Yeah.
We can't think about today and tomorrow. We also have to think about down the road. Expansion, a pole building.
Sewer lines going to that...
Pardon?
Sewer lines going to that hill too.
Oh, the sewer lines go in there so that...
Expand it back.
That's all.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have quite a few trees.
Naples there.
Right. We have quite a few trees all around the campus, actually. The sheriff really doesn't want any more trees around his...
Well, this is all garden here for the, for the...
Right, but I'm saying around the, on the campus, he's not looking for more trees. I think he was opposed to that idea, putting any more trees in.
So what about this area in here? If we're gonna do one? You know, between the parking lot and the road, you know, the...
How many do you have?
There's one, two, three, four, five, six trees in there already. I don't know how crowded is that area, you know?
What's that in front here?
Yeah.
That's all hill here up to that point. Uh, this flattens out. There's lines under here, all the lines, main feeds that come out, um, the well system.
Oh, yeah. Look, 'cause this is the well system here, right?
Right, it comes across here.
So they got it go across there and then they come across there.
You know, what I really think we should do is pencil in some of this stuff, um, like your water lines, because...
Well, we, we don't, I, yeah, we can do that either one.
Pencil in the water lines. Pencil in the sewer lines.
There's electrical lines under there. There's communication lines under there, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, if you start filling up that yard more, um, I've got hydrants here. Things have been placed already. The flagpole is up across here is water lines and, uh...
Yeah, see?
So we filled up the campus, uh, you know, I did over the years, every tree I planted, so, um, had a hand in it. So, where you want to go for memorial stuff, like you talk about the, uh, rain garden here, um, that was placed, uh, that spot there off the, you know, the corner of courthouse over here. That was for flowers and whatnot. Of course, when they add the gardens around, I don't see where you could play more trees around the building, personally. You can crowd some in elsewhere, but along this roadway down from courthouse to the hill here, unless they, unless they do something with this hill that's there now existing out here.
It's, it's kind of like a lot of scrub bush right in there.
Well, we cut all those pines. Moon had us cut out one year, all the pines cut out and there's just maples and it's just, you know, it's all grown. That could be developed or if they ever decide to tear this building so you can access the side to work on it, you know, there's...
Yeah.
We're kind of, personally, we're pushing the, you know, if you, the other option would be down here at the vetto's memorial. That's the biggest yard we have available or else you go out this field, but you keep knowing. You know, the reason for this field, all the dirt on this property was kept here when we built. There was difference.
So where would...
They'd have to take this and move down here if they ever had to redo that rain field. They'd have a place to...
Right, the second one.
Right.
So what you're saying, it's not a good idea for us to start planting trees in that area?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's one of those down the road, what ifs.
So if we're gonna, if we're looking at it, so then we're looking at either this area or at the memorial?
They'd have to make, run down with equipment, put something in here, 'cause this is all maple trees down here. This is just, as you're driving out to the left.
Right, so there's no room for a tree in there?
No, it's got solid maples and just trees coming up.
So that's not a good thing.
The other option, like I said, down at Vetto's Memorial, that open yard back here, um, I had put a couple trees there and then took them out because we didn't have irrigation for time. Just didn't...
But you do have irrigation down there now?
Yes, sir.
And so, so what would it, what would it cost to irrigate it? To, you know, to get that?
Uh, well, we just run trickle to it.
Yeah.
You know, and being it's irrigated now, we have moisture. Before, we used to run a hose down from here through the woods.
Yeah.
You know, to water trees.
I know. I remember when we put those sleeves on, that's when we put one in for that. That was a good idea.
Right. For something that would be a focal or what we may want to do or you may want to do, you know, for a dedication tree or whatever it might be, might be here at this point in time. The other, uh, I, I don't know the details.
So you're thinking of, of the east side of the building or the east side of the building? Those are really your preferences?
Well, if you wanted to spend money to get in there and tear out all this, this maple and re-landscape this corner down.
Yeah, and we don't want to do that.
That's optional there. That wasn't the intention.
We're not looking to spend more money.
Right. Everything else is, like you said, around the jail, around the front here, there could be a few spots there we could, you know, drop some trees in. But, you know, other than that...
Well...
I don't know.
I don't think that's an ideal area to put a tree in around the jail and start, you know...
Well, but we're, she's, we're talking this.
Oh, over on this side.
Yeah, he's saying there might be a spot or two there. That would be another option. I mean, what, what do you think about that, Nathan? I mean, he's, so he's talking here, here, or over here? If we're gonna do one. I, I'm wondering if any of these trees are dying or have died.
Well...
They're all, they're all fine?
This, this plum has always got a lot of scale insects on it. Right, that doesn't, it's doing fine.
Fitness side man's dying.
The master gardeners complain about the scales on it. It's a good lesson about, um...
A non-native, but a...
And I don't know, Jared, what do you think about that sugar maple? 'Cause it had big cracks in the...
Yeah, I've got that next door. I don't know. The ones I donated over here, seven maples, like off my house we transplanted when we first moved here, are doing great. They were, you know, I don't know why they're large, but the four over here have those cracks and this one out here has that split and they say it'll, and maple heal over. But how much of a split, I don't know. No one can answer why it did, but they've done that.
But we're not in a position today that we're gonna remove those trees or within the next year.
There's still...
Still valuable trees. So...
So you wouldn't recommend replacing any of those?
Uh, at this point, I, I, until we see what happens, I don't know. You know, we...
Okay, so, so there aren't any dead trees that we could take it out and then they could put from there? That's what I was hoping we could do, but...
There's that option, but...
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
Right, well, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna recommend pulling anything out, you know, just, just because.
What you want to put in there would be the first thing. And then...
Well, I mean, you could put in the same kind of tree that's there.
Oh, definitely.
If that's a native, which I think it is.
I see that sugar maple.
Yeah.
I noticed down here, there's four flowering crab trees.
Those are around the memorial, right?
Right.
I've had to prune those back. Something happened to them one year and started dying, so I cut all the dead stuff out and kind of push, but it's grown again, but I don't know.
This type of tree, more maintenance for you than a regular, like, say, a small maple?
No, not, not really, no.
I'm wondering if we could put another crab apple tree in there?
That was a native tree.
I don't know.
There.
But they're already there.
I don't think it, they're fine trees. I'm, I don't think they're native, but they've been here for so long.
They're almost native.
Naturalized. So crab apple would be a fine tree there.
Would there be room down there for another crab apple tree?
Around the memorial.
The memorial?
The way they're planted, yeah, it could be outside here. Inside is power.
It would have to be over here.
There's power underneath there.
Mm-huh.
All right, yeah. On the inside?
Yeah, just on...
You're saying on the inside?
Yeah, all around here, there's power.
Okay.
Okay, for...
Is there sprinkling over here or over here?
This is all sprinkled. This is all sprinkled back here down here. And we have irrigation going across here.
Well, I was thinking, it's too bad we kind of relocated some of those historic hothorns that were on the old grounds.
Yeah.
Those are those trees.
How big do they get?
Pretty good size.
But those, those had to be almost 100 years old.
Yeah. They, they've died since or they're getting pretty rough. No, no water?
No, they're just, I was thinking for...
Do you have a recommendation what kind of a tree?
Well, it... Hawthorns are nice, be, be smaller. Hawthorn is native, um, some of the Hawthorns.
When you say small, are you saying like up to 25 feet?
I mean, there are Hawthorns, like, I've seen in landscapes that are small, that are 20-ish feet. And it might be a dwarf root stock or something, I'm not sure, but they don't, they're not really big. They're just ornamental trees.
They're ornamental, did you say?
Mm-hmm.
In what way?
Only flower in the spring. They're, they can kind of, you know, bloom into a nice shape.
Would you be willing to do the walling?
You're talking about flowering Hawthorn?
Yeah.
The only problem I had with them was, and you couldn't hide them because they got thorns on them.
Oh.
And first year I moved there, when I first started, 1980, they ran into one, you know, the thorns were...
You know, I think I read that, about that tree where they have thorns.
They do.
Yeah, I don't think that's a great idea, the thorns. That's just me.
If it's located down here, it's probably...
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah.
It seems like you almost gave a list of acceptable trees.
Well, I went through, yeah. I went through and started to look at native trees, you know, to try to figure height, what kind of stuff is gonna fall off? Uh, you know, I saw some that were flowering. I didn't get a long list. I think the smallest one was this American hornbeam and I don't know anything about the tree, really. Uh, but it's native to Chicago.
We have, um, I'm not sure.
A small maple tree?
A muscle...
Oh, no. It's a large tree.
And are native, I call them Hawthorn beam. I'm not sure necessarily it's the same species as, unless I think they're all...
A red maple, 40 to 60 feet. You know, they're, they're all big trees to me.
I have a list of short trees that I, I went to the airport when they cut out all those trees about the Traverse City Airport. And they, people living over there can only plant trees like they were 20 feet tall.
Right.
So I have a list like that of, giving you what's all native trees.
Yeah, I went through and created this list, but I was looking at, you know, sizes.
Yeah.
You know, we, kind of check with the, pretty much, long after row on, but to continue with certain, I mean, dedication trees could come along here, you know, we could set it back. Our intent, is your intent, to put something that you could put in, you know, like a, a tree that's in a bucket, so to speak, a large, something that could be handled by two guys that size? You're not talking about having a spade truck come in, spade in a huge tree, are you guys? That, that would be the first...
No, I don't think that that...
Something we could dig by hand and put in correctly, start it.
Right, I'm, I'm thinking it's gonna be a small tree.
Sure.
Inch and a half diameter or less.
Or two.
Yeah, two inches.
You know, for something that you can handle, okay.
Yeah, and that's what they want. They want it to, I, I'm thinking anyway, to grow for 100 years or whatever.
But that, but you could start, we have irrigation. We could hand plant, 'cause there's a, uh, got that pond down here on the corner, left side, which is going downhill to the left before we get to that field. Okay? But, you know, the thought is working some trees up along each side or continue this up with some dedicated trees if you want to. So 50 years to 75, 100 years from now, you know, you...
A canopy.
My, my thought was here, eventually having a canopy. That's why we started the maples, 'cause try to prune them high so there's light of sight when you're coming down the hill. But this is an option too, and bring it right back up to the wellhouse along that side. I know there's pine trees up here, okay, and there's pines here, but, you know, it, it's just a thought, because that's another option, 'cause then we could, we could run trickle to these, continue on. Uh, I've got a sleeve underneath this driveway here.
How far up would you want to see those trees come? If we were to...
Well, he's talking all the way if he's gonna do a canopy.
Boy, yeah, I mean, it's, it's an option because they're not gonna interfere with anything of keeping back in the road far enough for plowing, you know, for when they throw snow. But then it would give you an option of, they can grow all they want, but someday, maybe they can be, create a...
A canopy? Okay, my question to you is, is if, looking at the spacing here where these trees are from the road, and if you line those trees up in that same area, now, what's the distance?
Well, they're back ways here. We put those back up just because why, went up to the ridge right there. Okay, with, um, that large parking area just right there. But, yeah, you can start down, which I had a tree in this corner, but, but the pond, which you kind of stay just aside the pond and start up that way would be an option.
I don't know that I want to see those trees so close to the building because of the roots. I know at my house, I've got concrete that's coming out.
Well, they would be, they would be away from the building.
Yeah, they're not gonna be...
They're down the hill.
This is a steep hill here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's the steep hill. When you drive down with your left and everything kind of goes up.
I kind of like that idea where you continue that canopy all the way along.
But different trees, if you want dedicated tree and that would be a place to put whatever you decide.
Okay, so...
That gives, opens up the door for you.
So what's the distance between the trees that would be recommended?
Uh, what, 30?
30 feet?
20, 30, yeah, yeah.
30 feet?
Everybody has their opinion, but, you know, depends on their, I think it averages 30 sometime. Well, depends what you're putting in.
Well, if we continue this idea here, these are pretty much all maple.
But they're, yeah, it's true, they're, uh, sugar maple.
And if, if we, different kinds of maple, is that what you're saying?
Sugar, he said sugar maple.
Yeah, the soft maple.
Are we gonna have pales all along here in the spring?
No. No. But these maples up here, there's only a couple, we, we got these for free, these ones out in the field up top there.
Mm-huh.
Those, there's only, uh, there's three or four that are, I think, are soft maples. They, we got them for free from, um...
Whoever.
Yeah, and I remember one...
Did you ever, you never got any off my farm for here, did you?
No, sir.
No. Where did those go?
Where?
Yeah, 'cause I remember you went, came and got some, or didn't you?
No, I didn't.
Oh, you never did? Okay.
Think you offered, but I don't think you'd ever do it.
Okay, I didn't.
Unless they went to the, for, I don't know. But there's, there, they lose their leaves if you, you drive down. I don't know what's going on with them, but they're, they're soft maple. As I know, they lose their leaves and they look kind of...
What do we have?
I mean, I'd like to get that list of the 20 different or whatever it is that grow about 20 feet and then also that garden now, you know, so we can look at that. That would be good.
He's got it in my bag, just so you know, is maple or evergreen. That's it. Talk to the expert here, you're not...
What do we have from here going this way if we want?
Swamp.
Hmm?
It's a swamp.
Swamp.
But in front of the perimeter of the land that fronts 204, there are some trees, right?
You're talking about where?
All along here.
Right along the road.
Okay.
Oh, right here.
Along 204.
Yeah, those are maples up there that are irrigated along with all those pines that are irrigated, with irrigation up there. But, uh, that's, you know, that was all roadbed from back in the day when Will was young.
When they, yeah, before they did 204.
Exactly. But they better struggle up there, but that's all I know on that.
Well, we do have a couple options we can present to the board and see how the board, uh, feels about that.
Well, that's, here, I guess what I, I don't know if you have, but I, what I wrote down, the options would be continue the canopy from administration to the memorial and, and it could be on both sides, either side. Then it could be at the veterans memorial, you know, a location.
A smaller tree?
Yeah, either that, you know, yeah. But, you know, you talked about a Hawthorn or something like that, no?
I don't want the pickers.
Well, I mean, if it's a tree off to the side.
Crab apple tree, something of that size, so flowering.
Well, then there's also the east side of the building. We could do that in that area. But that, I don't know that that's accessible for people to see, so that probably, you know, if you put the plaque in there, I mean, once it's there, nobody will...
Well, if we could put something down here, you know, they could pull off in here if they wanted to go and have a gathering there.
When you have your walking trail established in front of the building where the, the gardens are maintained by the master gardeners.
You're talking this, these, these paths?
So, let's say, for example, you have a walking, I don't know, can you have a walking here on the south side? You probably can't, yeah.
They've got it up on the inside of the curb. It's part of that trail that comes up. They've got it up on the inside of the curb, that's part of that trail that comes through here.
But you're talking along here, aren't you? I don't think you can, that's real steep, yeah.
That's downhill, isn't it?
That's still a question around the building.
Yeah.
Down the road, there's...
It's downhill, right?
Yeah.
So you could get down, and if you're older, how do you get up?
Right.
I really think that, that the memorial place...
Is the best.
There is room up in this corner of the memorial, back up towards the tree line, if you come back where the wellhouse is, okay, and just draw a line right down to the memorial.
Yeah.
Back in this corner, there's an open yard up here, there's some stuff, yeah, from that, grab the parking, and like I said, behind there, there's open field that can be utilized, too, for, 'cause people like to go down there, and that's another option.
Initially, that's kinda what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a pretty area, there's parking, uh, the truck doesn't go all the way up to the courthouse. And there's irrigation, so honestly, that was my original idea, is to put something down here, but it was the type of tree, the location of the tree, and how messy is it gonna be for you guys, you know, what kind of a problem is it gonna create for you guys?
It's, it's not, we're fortunate, the people that mow, they just like to have the trees kinda up high enough, so when they're going with the machine, they don't...
They don't get hit.
Right, but that can be as pruning goes, as they grow, but, um, I don't know what kind of tree that's where you'd come in.
So the, the flagpole area is out, just because of the water and the, you know, and the electricity and everything else under that?
I think it's gonna bring congestion up here, and, and it's like today when I got here, parking lots fall.
Yeah.
You know, so today was the day that they wanted to have an event, now they're parking over here on the jail side.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's a problem.
Well, I see, you're thinking they're gonna come and have events around this thing?
I don't know, but what if they do?
I can't ever imagine that, I mean, but, I never thought of that.
Line of sight, they like, they're kind of, I think, probably maxed out around the jail, just because they don't want a lot of trees for security reasons.
If people wanna come and see it, you know, or if they wanna have an event, I just think...
So then it's down there, yeah.
I think that's a better place, um, or anywhere, you know, if they can park down here, and they wanna walk up to here, or if they wanna park in here, and I just think that we should provide an area for them, if they wanna come there and celebrate the day, or the event, or, I don't know. You need to paraphrase my language, you know?
Oh, you're doing great.
I'm just thinking it would give them an opportunity to do that.
I did, yeah, I never thought about events.
Right, and...
So, and if that is, then that probably is the best place, right there.
I'm also kinda wondering, because this is considered a memorial, part of the, uh...
Campus.
And a month of parties down there, so we could...
Look at what you're discussing for, request for, with the cost that we're going to bear for the particular tree or shrub, should that also include something for the plaque as well?
Yes.
Because they're gonna be funded by the bill, so we should probably...
And irrigation. You know, when he's gotta put the sprinkling on it, there should, there is a cost to that, I mean, it's not, it doesn't get there free, so I think that should be part of it, you know?
We don't talk about, um, putting any other, um, identifying markers on this. This just talks about...
We have to put a size of the plaques.
Well, it doesn't say here on this form.
No, that's what I'm suggesting.
Right.
You should have something there, attributable to the cost, and you have something standard.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, it's, I don't know, how big are those plaques out there, five by six, or...
Yeah, the ones you mean.
Yeah, that identify the plants and different things.
Yeah, yeah, maybe six by eight.
Six by eight?
Yeah.
Those are pricey, 'cause they're aluminum.
Yeah.
Jack Gounton ones are pretty pricey.
But that, that would be part of it, for sure, but I mean, so that would be the size, and whatever, I think they're, they're six by eight, that's, we shouldn't let them be any bigger than that.
And we should, and we should also talk about the type of material that would be allowed to be used, because we don't want something that's gonna leach a contaminant in the ground, or whatever, I mean...
The ones they have out here are really nice, you know, they're company drivers, you know, and you guys have, I think we have had that done.
I mean, we could get plaques that look like this, you know?
You want us to make it systematic?
Right.
Correct.
To get close to the tree with it, and put it in the ground, you know, and put mulch, or whatever you wanna put around it, to keep it composite, so...
The other thing that I, just because from perspective of listening to partisan representation, worst case scenario, let's say something happens, and the tree dies, are they going to feel that this has to be replaced at our expense? That's just a lake devil's idea.
Oh, I think that should very definitely be addressed, if, uh, if it dies, we're not gonna replace it. Um, we would, if it dies, then they're gonna have to go back through the same process. Because if we should happen, this is my thought, if we should happen to get a waiting list, you know, if we decide that at some point, we're only gonna replace trees that are existing, we may get a waiting list that says, you know, we wanna put a tree in, or whatever, and so they would just go back and reapply. And we can decide to take it out, or...
Do you think it'll be a problem if it's the Veterans Memorial, and we're putting the women's voting tree down there?
Didn't they fight for the rights of women to vote? I mean, it wasn't...
But it's, they're not, it's, it's not the same, same as the veteran. I mean, yes, I'm not saying they didn't, I'm just saying that's what the memorial is down there. Are we changing that, to make it just memorials? Well, I'm just saying somebody will ask that, you know, and, I mean, Richard Smucker might get very upset if you're putting the women's voters lead down with the Veterans Memorial.
Hmm?
Well, I don't know, I, I'm just devil's advocate, you know?
Then put it across the street.
We got a lot of...
Or is this considered part of the memorial?
No, that's just the parking lot, believe, that was where the memorial was going originally.
Mm-hmm.
And then when the house got moved, they moved, we moved it over here.
Well, that could...
You know, we can go around that parking lot, too.
Yeah.
Those two, those two maples, you got to where your pen is.
Right here, these two.
I mean, we can go around, 'cause we've got stones around there, I mean, we can work that all into that, too, you know, if you want.
I mean, it, it'd be best if it's here, I think.
Right.
You know, 'cause we got the sprinkling, you got everything, but if that, somebody's gonna gripe about that, it could be moved over there.
Who, who's in charge of the Veteran Memorial, I mean, the veterans, is it McCullough? Was he appointed as a...
David, no, Dave McCullough was, he's at the, um...
The Veterans Administrative Affairs Committee.
Yeah, it's not really, uh...
They don't, he, our representative doesn't have a lot of rights on that, we just have a seat so that they can report back. You don't actually get to vote on anything.
Well, here, here's my question, if we do have somebody that we appointed, why don't we have a conversation with them, and have them have a discussion with, you know, the veterans group that meet there, and see what their, their feeling is on this? What do you think about that?
Yeah, well, I mean, if that's gonna be our choice, and I do think we do have to address the veterans about it, I think we should.
Well, have a conversation with the veterans, to see if they're open to the idea, or if they feel, if they, they feel that we're approaching their space.
Can I say something, I, I don't personally, you know, from, to have something down there, as long, I think the biggest thing, I know the biggest thing was not having it allowed, the county does not allow to have parties and family gatherings, and picnic tables, and food, and all that, it's just memorial come and go.
Mm-hmm.
That's a big, that's a real big, was a big issue when we first started this, you know, not to make it into a, well, let's set up tents and stuff.
Right. It's a memorial.
Right, so, from that angle, you could, you know, if they want for women's rights, or whatever, if they worry about that, they could say, hey, guys, it's all part of life, but as long as there's no party to it.
I don't think they've actually represented this as some sort of symbol that they're going to throw a celebration, or they just wanted to donate a tree.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying, I just, always wanna keep that in mind, that this is not where we're gonna have some big, it's not gonna be a, a party park.
I got you, I know where you're going.
That's what's always, I'm just saying that's what the current...
It's not like our other park.
Yeah.
Old settlers.
Old settlers, where they go when they have an annual picnic, it's not like that, it's a place to go and...
That was a concern, too, was brought up, that.
Well, we can raise that issue at the board, you know, this might be the best place, uh, down here, but if not, if we're stepping on toes, then we could put it across, and there's still adequate parking.
I think we have enough space, personally, I can interject, it's not an intermission, but, um, I think between that, coming up along the road, both sides, we've got a lot of, there's a lot of spaces.
Actually, between there and here.
Exactly, there's something along in here, there's...
Right, but, I mean, do we want the campus to become a memorial campus, commemorating all different kinds of things? You know, that, that's a...
That's why you guys, I'm sitting here, trying.
You know, I mean, if we start this...
We don't know what we're gonna get in the future, I'd rather keep it off the main campus, and, um, in this area.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to say we have it, 'cause we have two already, basically.
Well?
With Deegan and Gallagher.
What's the, the other one?
Gallagher.
Yeah, and...
And Deegan, Joe Deegan.
Oh.
Somebody, I don't know how that ever got done, but it...
I was just told to put it in, so...
Oh, really?
Could you put it outside our window, if it's not, that, that was just before.
Well, we can move it.
Yes, we can.
We can move it.
Yeah, it's small enough, it's a, some type of tour, just trim the bottom, 'cause it's a...
Yeah.
So, okay, you're gonna get us a list?
We have a...
And a map.
White Plaska.
Yeah, and a list, and... I'm sorry, what?
White Plaska, you know, my partner, Brian, one of them, maintenance, he's, he used to work for Lauder's, so he's been a big help, and saved us a lot of money, 'cause he understands the system, so...
Oh, good.
That was a...
Big plus.
Yeah, a big plus, so if we have to add trickle or something.
Right.
It's not a problem. We need to get ahold of somebody from the veterans, to make sure that we're not stepping on toes.
I can talk with Dave McCullough, I see him quite regularly.
Yeah, okay, so we'll have Dave get the information.
I'll probably have to go have a beer with him or something.
And one more thing, the, you guys, when you put in that irrigation well, that's further up here, that little, to handle our irrigation, so it's separate from our domestic, that well, that pump there, so, what do you wanna call it? It adjusts, I can't think of it, to the pressure.
Oh, okay.
It goes, it's not just bang, this is what it gets, this will adjust, so if we add to it, it's gonna increase dramatically.
More cost to operate?
Solid State Drive, I think is what they call it, something like that.
Not brown nosing here, I'm just saying it.
No, it was a good decision, because we don't have to run it through the whole, you know, test and everything.
Excuse me. No, I don't have Corona. Did you see what they're, they're looking at a vaccine, uh, Israel, in the next three weeks?
I thought it's a virus, and you can't have one, there aren't any for viruses.
Well, there's a flu vaccine. That's what I rest, don't put that in there.
I did order masks, by the way.
Yeah, they say the price of masks, well, it skyrocketed.
I can't buy, I can't buy another hundred for thirty days, so...
Well, and they also said that the ones that most people are getting are not really effective, they have to be a special nine, twelve mask, or something.
Almost the...
Yeah.
So...
But it makes people feel better.
I think one more thing that we need to kinda nail down, as far as the recommendation to, to the full board, is a little more in-depth look at the plaque, you know?
Well, we need to know the size that we're gonna do.
Yeah, maybe we could...
Do you want me to go and measure those, or...
We'll have you pull one of those at our next meeting, and bring it in, 'cause...
That was a blank, four by six, so some of them are even, you know...
Well, there are different sizes out there, there are a few.
Okay.
I'm, I'm thinking we look at the one that's...
Just take a walkthrough and tape, measure them, see, okay, are they plastic signs?
He said they're aluminum, aren't they?
Yeah, the plaques, hands up.
Okay.
Gallager's was, um, brass.
Well, so they, but they have a choice, it could be either brass or aluminum.
Do you know who made the sign?
They have a shaft.
Is there any way you can find that out? Okay. Um, because maybe we would recommend them as a reason to get the signs made, or require them to get the signs made, you know, from a vendor.
You don't even have to mix it, you just gotta pour it in, you know, I, I like that, I used to mix it when I was young.
True, but you had to.
Yeah. Get just as hard.
And then do they just stamp them?
They're printed.
They're printed.
Now they're using...
Aluminum, so, so I, I would think that they would be able to...
What do they put around these?
Stamp them, well, whatever, I'm not in that business, I don't know.
When I put this belt, you know, I think, the crock in my basement, that's why I put the piece on all of it, they said it, that we, it'll, it won't crack, it'll have pressure on it, and I was surprised by that. All right, any other items?
Yeah, there is one more.
Yes.
I, I, I'm not ready to recommend this yet...
Okay.
To the board, I wanna think about this, and see, you know, if we need to add, or...
Well, yeah, okay, so, so...
Who does?
That's what the memo states.
They're, they're talking about...
You're talking about the pinwheels.
Yeah, that's, we're moving on to that, this one, we're gonna get that information, we'll have another meeting, and then we'll, you know, do you wanna have one next week?
As soon as possible, as soon as I can gather the information.
We can probably get it from him after the meeting, he would go and get us a copy of each. We go to, you have them at your office?
Uh, I do, I do, yeah.
It's just a matter of locating them, I bet, yeah?
Yeah.
On my computer.
Don't you?
Okay, well, um, do you want us to check before we leave the building, to see if you have them available, or...
Well, yeah, uh, it's up to you how you wanna do that, I, I probably, the printer sometimes doesn't work very well, it takes like an hour for it to...
Email it down, send it to you?
Okay, I'll have him run it.
Okay.
That's a good idea. There's always some kind of solution, all right, so are we ready to move on to pinwheel?
Yeah.
All right, so we have this request, that says, in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month, the Traverse Bay Children's Advocacy Center, like to plant a pinwheel garden at the corner of Government Center Drive and Duck Lake Road, in Traverse Bay. Says the pinwheels are symbols of the child's innocence and safe childhood that every child deserves. I have included pictures of the garden that planted past around the Grand Traverse region.
My only concern is, I hope in the seasonal season, it's...
It, it's not a realistic request, in my, uh, opinion, for this, for this, um, the purpose is, um... I don't think we can look at the purpose for it, okay, because we all agree, I'm sure, that child abuse is not something that, you know, we advocate. So, we need to take that off the table, take the emotion out of the request, in my opinion, and look at the practicality of putting plastic windmills, you know, all across the front, especially this time of year. I think it's just not feasible.
And being the road right away, not too important, because, so that's the best case scenario, we have a month of spring, and it's dry, you still have a lot of harvest, all about, and, I don't know, I don't know where it's set up, but I just don't see winter ending. Thirty days is a long time.
It's not a month, or a month.
I wish they did, but, you know, a long good storm.
Well, I...
Exactly, it's just, to me, it's not feasible.
I would make a motion that we not recommend it.
I'll support it.
I mean, I guess, like, you can't make a negative motion, so, you know, how would we say this? You know? You know, because we gotta, we gotta bring it to the board, what the recommendation is not to.
My recommendation is to decline the garden, the pinwheel garden request.
Okay, yeah.
I don't have to give a reason. They'll ask.
The locations, less than...
It's not even, it's not even about location.
Well, and it's in the road right away. I don't know that we really wanna put things in the road right away.
It's gonna create, it's gonna create problems on the campus for a lot of reasons. If it's moved.
Distraction for people driving.
One thing, if you had a raised bed that was associated with that sign on there, you could stick them in there, because then it'd be off of the, the road, and it's known that people see them. Being on the ground right next to the road, I...
Not feasible. It's not practical. It's not feasible to me.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll bring that forward to them.
You know, if they...
To the board and let them talk about it, 'cause we can't make a final decision here.
But if you look at the pictures, it looks like it's on a, sort of like a, a drive, not necessarily a main road.
Main road, mm-hmm.
And that probably is fine.
And some might go in a half stair, sixty, and throws it out of it.
So, it's by the YMCA?
And what do I do if we get one of those springs that we need to start mowing, as you say, that's...
Well, that's the other thing. You know, it's just not feasible to me. I mean, if, if they came to us and said, you know, can we put two of these windmills outside the door by the flower garden with the little whatever, that's a whole lot different than to bring them all across the front of a campus, you know, for a short term. If you wanted to put a pinwheel out there, if they had a certain color or a message on it or whatever, that might be a different story.
Or even somewhere, just something small scale up front here, or...
That's what I'm getting at. You know, if they put a windmill out here in the garden, you know, by the door, but I don't wanna start that practice either. You know, having everybody come in and drop something for whatever program that they wanna promote, I don't, I'm not all about that. This is a professional, you know, building. I look at it as a professional building, and, you know, we may accept pinwheels today, but what happens if the next guy comes along and wants to put skull and bones out there? You know, because...
Represent something.
You know, he wants to represent Dr. Kevorkian.
Right.
You know, we can't say no to him if we say yes to pinwheels, so, I don't wanna start that, personally. That's my opinion. Great cause, but not here. So, let's recap. What are we gonna get? We're gonna get a map. We're gonna get a list. Um, I would like to have you come back with, take a map, and I would like you to draw on there where our sewer, uh, comes in and where our electrical or whatever, uh, infrastructure that's in the ground that I can't readily identify on this map, draw it in with a pencil and magic marker or something so that we have a visual, so that the board will be able to look at this visual map and say, this is our sewer lines, either this, that, or whatever you have. Is that unreasonable?
This, uh...
Doesn't have to be exact.
No, uh, no, that's great. I can do that, but use this.
Yeah, use that.
It'd be a good reference, really, you know, for, you know, in the future, too.
Right. So, you can make it as detailed as you want. That's up to you, but just for...
Can I use, uh, this red line?
E, e, even if you could put the sleeves in that you, like you, you just said, there's a sleeve across...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right there, yeah. If you put those on it, too, so that, you know, that all that information can be passed on as well.
Sure.
Irrigation?
I'm actually doing that.
Is that what they're trying to...
Yeah, irrigation, like, aren't there some sleeves here, too?
Water lines.
Where?
Yeah, irrigation.
Yeah, we did those, right, and we'll get the power down here, too. If we put those in, and then, oh, 'cause I'm throwing that, doing that to Traverse from our farm.
Gas.
Moving to the farm.
Yeah.
Makes me, and then he has a reference, 'cause of all this stuff, I know, but he has no clue where the power is.
It could be here forever.
Yeah, right. So, that way, it would, you know, and that could get filed, you know.
And, and Jerry, we want that before lunch? No, I'm kidding. Okay, so you're gonna do a visual mapping of the infrastructure underground.
Okay.
Everybody's getting their marching orders here. Yeah, she's great.
And, okay, map and a list, visual mapping, and then check with Dave McCullough, right, on the, uh, perception of the Veterans Memorial. You can take care of that.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll talk to Dave McCullough.
All right. Yeah, maybe you wanna have a discussion?
I might even talk to Al, um...
Uh-huh, Al, Genie's husband.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Aldrich.
Aldrich, yes. I said, couldn't think of it, yeah. Right. Yeah, I could talk to Greg, Ken, Ken Pomeran also, so I think he's the, so I'll talk to those people about it, just so that we...
Yeah, just get a general feeling of, you know, if they're...
Is it sacral sac or not?
Right.
Got more and more parking spots, fifteen, twelve yesterday.
Who did?
No.
Did he really?
What do you think about this? I gotta go back, because people park along the side here. Well, they can park in the field. That was also, we had one here, we were at Mole, people parked the length, distance.
They don't wanna walk all that far.
So, it's for one hour.
They'd really walk them all forever, but...
Is there anything else that we need to discuss today?
Actually, I'd like to mention something.
Yes.
If you drive in, and I don't know if I mentioned it right now, but the front of our sign is getting quite a beating from the plowing, and the blue being is falling off. And then I happened to, it was just last week that you got a break in your, like a quarter...
Yeah, we got that down. We got the decent downstairs.
Is there a panel on it broken?
Well...
Inside corner.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's probably from snow hitting it and the clouds.
Stones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe when we get that replaced, they can reinforce the, the backside, 'cause there's nothing written on the backside, so.
Right, that's what it's got.
Is that a...
What's the warranty on that?
Lighted, plastic sign.
Yeah, it's like a foam.
Panel? Uh, foam board, not...
Kind of a foam, it's, it's kind of, yeah, a real hard...
Yeah. Well, it's the same thing Veronica Valley says, it's all of them are.
Okay. I was thinking, I know I have, my sign is a frame and it's got plastic panels, and you can take the panels off and redo the panels, but that's not the same thing down there. Okay.
Sun, everything at each time.
Well, it's had a good, uh, many, since eight, you know.
Twelve years.
Yeah, that's long time. Anything else?
Um, no, I don't, I don't have anything else. I mean, well, I, I mean, I have the, the, I think we, we have the idea where, and we'll make a recommendation of where we wanna put it, but the, the, the places that I've looked at is continuing the canopy, the Veterans Memorial, the east side of the building, you know, tho, those three.
You're talking about this?
Yeah. You know, those are, and it could be on the pathway, not that that's a good one. You know, and our recommendation, you know, might be the memorial, depending on what talk to them, or I also would cross from the mall, but that, that's the same.
So, either side of the road here.
And then we'll have to decide which one we want best to recommend, but we also will let the board know of the other options.
Right. And you're gonna work on trees for us, so that we can, I would like to see, um...
I mean, the tree list you have is great, but it, those are awfully big, I think.
Exactly. I mean, I just did a quick internet search, you know. I don't know where to really go to look for trees.
Stayed back on this hill.
Yeah.
We're gonna stay back up higher, because we've got the power, power line, underground power.
See, and that's good to know, that, that where that is.
Well, it's good that you want that, because it helps refresh.
Yeah.
Right. And that's what I mean, you can think about it.
Well, if somebody's going to put a hole in or whatever, we need to know, you know, if we wanna put a tree in, it'd be good to know that.
So, if we dig, do we have to call and miss dig first?
Recommend it always.
Yes. I, I promise, I won't call and mistake.
Okay, so...
You know the history, so I, yes.
No, I don't.
Oh, yes, well, yes.
I don't need to know the history, but the...
No, but, yeah.
You, you only make that mistake once.
Okay, so, but, I just wanted to be sure that, before we put something in the ground, that...
When I sleep, do I have some gas here with one?
Okay, okay.
Believe me.
I understand that completely.
I would say that, you can't stand, you can't look at a fuse box and look outside and say, okay, the line goes like this. Well, let's see, we'll put the hole here for the drain, up in the wellhouse, and all of a sudden, everything goes dark, and the guys get home in, it's all. Okay. So, anyway, they don't go inside, interestingly, they said, but he did afterwards, and that fire.
Yeah.
That, by the half inch, that's all it took. You know, three of us standing, well, let's put it.
I, I've just driven in a fence post.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I was just gonna, you know, put a, I don't remember what it was, but drove in and hit the wire.
Did we, excuse me?
I mean, I could've been over one inch, you know, wouldn't be hit up.
Uh, did we have a tree that died back here on the east side?
There's a two of tree, a wash, and then one where it's blank.
Over here, by the tree line?
Yeah, there's, there's one there. I put a, another, I can't remember, I can't put in a small little, uh, whip in there.
So, there's a tree in there right now?
There's a little one in there, but that's on a hill, remember?
Would you identify that?
Try.
Just on your map?
Yeah.
When you're drawing out your sewer lines, just put a circle there and put a tree.
Tree.
Yeah. It's not a shrub, right? It's a tr- it's a tree. So, when they're looking at this, they can say, oh, well, there's one here, here, but there's not one here. Let's put one here.
What's tough about that is that right along the edge.
That's actually what I was thinking, when I was looking at it, when I said the east side.
Right. There is a tree there.
But there is one there, but that doesn't matter. They're still...
Right on the hill, that's off, just off the hill.
Yeah.
And tall grass, that doesn't...
Yeah, I don't see people going there if they wanna look at their stuff.
Do you have any other suggestions?
No.
Okay.
Did we miss anything?
No, there are.
Did we miss anything, Jerry? Did we miss anything?
No, I'll get that underground stuff.
Do we need to, do we need to look at which way the sun comes up and goes down? I'm just asking for shade.
I should've, you're right, that's north.
Well, this is east, and this is west, correct?
As it stands, but...
Pretty much.
Yeah, what's more, this is north, is almost like here.
Okay.
As we sit.
So, this isn't oriented north, south?
So, this would get good sun in here, really.
Yeah.
Anything in here would get good sun. It would get good sun there. Won't get a west sun so much unless it's back further. Okay. Okay. I think we're good. Um...
Oh, good.
All right. Next week, what day?
We know that's not right. How come?
You wanna meet Friday? Oh, no, I'm probably gonna try to go out of town. Oh, wait a minute, spring break?
Oh, that's for another...
Oh, wrong one.
Yeah, that's a handway.
The sixth.
That's a Friday?
Mm-hmm.
You wanna do it then?
Ten AM again?
Yeah, I like the ten AM when it's winter. Gives me a little extra drive time and...
Well, I have a delivery set up for, for eight in the morning.
Uh, okay.
So, I mean, is it ten? I, I don't know.
We can do it a lot, well...
Ten thirty?
I, I'm just not sure what time. I mean, they say eight, but I never know when they're gonna show up.